We'll call the meeting to order and Lisa would you do the honors?
Mr. Lado Fortune representing the Mattapana District, Mr. Calvin Taylor representing the Port Royal District, Dr. Sarah Calverick Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Jawanda Rollins Fells representing the Reedy Church District, Mrs. Allison Sears representing the Western Caroline District, Mr. Sean Kelly representing the Madison District, and I'm Lisa Stevens, Clerk of the Board. Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Okay, all right, we will now entertain a motion to go into executive session under the Superintendent's Personnel Agenda for Discussion of Appointments, Reappointments, Strengths, Grants, Summer School, Resignation, Retirement, Position Changes, Consult with Attorney, Stipends, Grants, Design, Discipline Letter, Hourly and Authorized Section 22-371A1 of the Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended.
Sir, move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, we are now in closed session. Thank you.
Good evening, school board members, CCPS families, students, staff, and the Caroline community. I, Calvin Taylor, Chair of the Board, would like to cause a June 11th School Board meeting to order. It is my privilege to welcome those attending in person at Caroline High School as well as those viewing on our CCPS YouTube channel. Each provides an avenue for you to receive information, heighten education awareness, and involvement. The school board is grateful for your attendance as we continue to move our school division in a forward direction as #OneCaroline. Again, welcome to the school board meeting, and now I would like to ask the clerk to call the roll. Okay, I'm sorry, we've already established a quorum. So that takes us to the recognition announcement.
Point of order. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval to return from closed session.
Okay. Board members, we need a motion to certify our closed session.
Motion, a motion to return from closed session. Motion has been made.
Second. It's been moved and properly seconded that we return from closed session. Now we need a motion to certify that only those things discussed in the closed session were appropriate under what we went in for.
Point of order, we need to vote on the returning back. So we have a motion, we have a second, we need to vote.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we return from closed session. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 All opposed, we are now returned from closed session. Now we need a motion to certify.
So moved.
Is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded that we certify that only those things under which we were allowed to discuss were discussed in closed session. The motion carries. Okay, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye. The certification.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, if we can start down the line or if Lisa can call the roll, we need to say yes to the certification.
Okay. Lisa.
Mr. Kelly.
I certify.
Mrs. Sears.
I certify.
Dr. Rollins Fels.
I so certify him.
Dr. Hubbard.
I so certify.
Mr. Fortune.
I so certify.
Mr. Taylor.
I so certify, and the motion carries. We also need to amend our agenda. I need a motion to do that.
Mr. Chairman, I move for, motion for removal of item 7A. Information planned for analysis on benchmark advanced implementation and secondary teacher efficacy that was going to be presented by Dr. Neighbors and Ms. Haley. I ask that that item be removed from the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we would remove item 7A from the agenda. Lisa, would you call for the vote?
Sears. Mr. Fortune.
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Fels.
Aye.
Mr. Taylor.
Aye. And the motion carries. Mr. Fortune.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Good afternoon. Thank you for being present this afternoon. Before we begin our meeting, I would like to offer words of inspiration. As quoted by Edward Hale, "Together" is one of the most inspiring words in the English language. Coming together is a beginning. Keeping together is progress, and working together is success. Together, families are stronger. Together, sports teams are victorious. Together, friendships are strengthened. Together is better when unity is a priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fortune. If we could stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That takes us to Achieve 2027 Teacher Recruitment and Retention.
Evening Chair Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, members of the board, and Dr. Calvery. This evening, I will provide you with an update on the hiring of certified staff for the 25-26 school year. First, I will provide you with a high-level overview of our current recruiting efforts for 25-26. At Caroline County Public Schools, we are deeply committed to attracting and retaining high-quality teachers who are passionate about student success. To meet this goal, we've implemented a comprehensive set of recruitment strategies designed to build a diverse, talented, and dedicated teaching workforce. One of our key approaches has been participating in over 20 college and community job fairs where we've engaged directly with future educators and shared the many opportunities that CCPS has to offer. These events also allowed us to connect with candidates face-to-face and showcase our commitment to supporting both new and experienced teachers. We've also made strong use of social media and digital communication. Platforms like Facebook and our CCPS Express newsletter help us spread the word about job openings, highlight staff success stories, and keep the community informed about recruitment efforts. In addition, we've expanded our reach through virtual platforms like Handshake, which allows us to target college students and recent graduates. Recognizing that not every great teacher comes through a traditional route, we've hosted multiple alternative licensure presentations for community members looking to transition into teaching. These events have generated strong interest with more than 50 attendees eager to learn about new pathways to the classroom. We're also proud to participate in the J-1 Visa Teacher Exchange Program. This year, we welcomed our eight international teachers from the Philippines through our partnership with Greenheart. These educators bring global perspectives and enrich our school communities in meaningful ways. Currently, both principals at Lewis and Clark and Caroline High School are interviewing potential teachers from Greenheart as well. We've also continued our partnership with I Teach, a program that provides structure and support for individuals earning certification while working in our schools. It's one more way we're opening doors for passionate professionals to enter the field. To stay competitive, we're offering sign-on bonuses for high-need positions, especially at the elementary and middle schools, ensuring we can recruit strong candidates where their need is most. And finally, we're proud to support the Richmond Teacher Residency Program. With one resident currently placed at Lewis and Clark Elementary for the 25-26 school year, this model provides hands-on mentorship while building a pipeline of future educators committed to our division. Together, these efforts reflect our mission: to build a strong, qualified, and passionate team of educators because our students deserve nothing less. Next, I will provide you with information on our current candidate pool numbers. The current data reflects the number of applicants we currently have in the candidate pool for various subject areas. While we continue to actively recruit, the numbers remain low, highlighting the ongoing challenges in attracting qualified candidates in certain areas. Next, I will provide you with staffing updates for each school building. Please note, Lotus Please note, Lotus Academy is not included in this presentation because they are expected to be fully staffed for 25-26, which is great news. At Caroline High School, we began the 25-26 hiring season with 19 certified vacancies. To date, 11 of these positions have been filled with fully licensed teachers, significantly strengthening the instructional team. Many of last year's vacancies were temporarily covered by long-term substitutes who will not be returning this year, and we are now focusing on ensuring that these roles are filled with certified staff members. Currently, eight certified positions remain open, including four special education teachers, one Spanish teacher, one math teacher, one English teacher, and one ASL teacher. We currently have offers out for our ASL teacher, and Dr. Connolly and his team have been actively interviewing candidates. And additionally, as I mentioned earlier, Dr. Connolly is also exploring the possibility of hiring additional J-1 visa teachers to help fill remaining content area vacancies. At Caroline Middle School, we began the hiring season with a total of 15 certified vacancies, many of which were covered by long-term substitutes. We are very pleased to share that the majority of these positions have now been filled with fully certified teachers, strengthening the instructional team for the upcoming school year. To date, we have hired 11 certified staff members and one long-term substitute who is currently enrolled in a teacher preparation program. As of now, we have three remaining vacancies, which include a Director of Counseling, Science Teacher, and a Librarian. We have offers out for both the Director of Counseling and the Science Teacher. At Bowling Green Elementary, we started the hiring season with 12.5 certified vacancies. Since then, we've made solid progress by hiring four certified teachers, and we have three long-term subs who are currently enrolled in teacher preparation programs. At this time, 5.5 certified vacancies remain, which includes 1.5 school counselor positions, two preschool teachers, one second-grade teacher, and one third-grade teacher. Ms. Hextall has been actively interviewing for both elementary and preschool positions, and we are optimistic that these roles will be filled very soon. At Lewis and Clark, we began the 25-26 hiring season with 21 certified vacancies. To date, we have successfully hired five certified teachers, and 11 of our vacancies are filled with long-term substitutes who are currently enrolled in teacher preparation programs. At this time, five certified vacancies remain. The school team is being led by Ms. Brown, who is actively working to fill these positions with highly qualified staff. She's also exploring the J-1 visa program. At Madison Elementary School, the 25-26 hiring season began with 11 certified vacancies. So far, the school has successfully filled eight positions with certified teachers, and two long-term substitutes are enrolled in teacher preparation programs. Currently, we have one certified vacancy remaining for a library media specialist, and Ms. Hicks and her team are actively interviewing candidates as they come in. Up next, I'll share the next steps that my HR team, working closely with our school and division leaders, is taking to support our ongoing recruitment efforts and ensure every classroom is fully staffed. To strengthen our recruitment efforts and expand our reach to high-quality candidates, we have implemented several strategic initiatives. We're increasing our social media presence, again, using platforms like Facebook and Instagram more frequently to share job postings, highlight staff success stories, and promote the benefits of working in Caroline. We have updated Handshake platform. We're actively engaging college students and recent graduates by maximizing our presence on Handshake, allowing for direct outreach and increased visibility at universities. Attending additional virtual hiring events this summer, we will be participating in a virtual hiring event through Virginia Works to connect with job seekers across the state. I have been conducting weekly teaching and Caroline information sessions, and these sessions are held to educate potential applicants about career opportunities. And expanding our job postings, we have increased the frequency and visibility of job postings on Indeed and LinkedIn to tap into broader and more diverse applicant pools. Finally, we are attending local community events to build relationships and raise awareness of career opportunities and encourage community members to explore roles within the division. These ongoing efforts are part of a broader strategy to ensure that every classroom is staffed with passionate, qualified educators for the upcoming year. And last, I will talk about our retention efforts and how we continue to prioritize retention of our high-quality staff by investing in meaningful compensation, benefits, and employee support initiatives. We remain committed to creating a supportive, rewarding, and growth-oriented environment for all employees. Our latest initiatives reflect a continued investment in staff recognition, professional development, and work-life support. In spring 2025, we held our Sundays with the Superintendent, a division-wide appreciation and listening event that allowed staff voices to be heard and valued. This effort is being extended through our stay interviews conducted over the summer with HR, giving insight into employee satisfaction and guiding future retention strategies. We proudly celebrated the completion of the William &amp; Mary Reading Specialist Cohort and the ODU Math Specialist Cohort, both of which supported specialized instructional capacity in our schools. Looking ahead, we will launch the 2026 Educational Leadership Cohort to develop and mentor our next generation of school leaders. To strengthen employee compensation, all staff received a 3% salary increase inclusive of step for the 25-26 school year. Additionally, we implemented scale adjustments for paraprofessionals, custodians, and food service workers, and provided a retention bonus to those who signed their contracts by May 23rd. In response to employee feedback, we are launching preschool opportunities for CCPS staff this fall at all three elementary schools. This program will serve children ages three and four and will be open to both resident and non-resident staff at an affordable rate. We are also enhancing our benefits experience with a new supplemental benefits provider, offering expanded services such as legal and identity theft protection, student loan counseling, and long-term care insurance. To improve access and communications, HR team has increased its in-school presence, now offering monthly office hours at every building, an upgraded HR webpage, and a redesigned onboarding experience for new employees. Together, these efforts underscore our unwavering commitment to supporting the incredible people who make a difference in CCPS every day. And I will take any questions you may have.
I'm not sure we have questions, and I certainly will give board members a chance to do that, but would just like to say thank you for a detailed report. And we do realize that it is very difficult to fill all these positions and keep certified people in place, but that's what has to happen in order for our school system to be successful and our children to be successful. So we appreciate all that you have done and all that the staff does to recruit qualified people for these positions. Having said that, I would ask if board members have questions at this time regarding... Dr. Calverick.
I would be remiss not to take this opportunity to bring out a public compliment to both Ms. Tucker and her department as well as the Instructional Department, who have been meeting on a weekly basis to review staffing, to ensure that our collective capacity regarding talent management is growing internally and yielding great results. And Ms. Tucker's one-year anniversary begins on July 1, and to be able to outline such a detailed report and extensive efforts in less than 365 days is admirable, and we look forward to that continued growth, so shout out to your department and you as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to our Board Committee updates. At this time, if board members have updates, start at the end. Mr. Kelly.
The Mary Washington ATI Board, we've started our second year, you know, this year they just had freshmen on the Stafford campus, so next year they're going to have sophomores and freshmen, so that program's going to double in size, so there's a lot of excitement going on with that, with Dr. Towery. That, that's always a fun thing to go to because those kids are, they're not like in the gifted program and stuff, but the stuff that they do with, don't ask me to explain, gentleman behind here would probably have a better opportunity, they would understand the computer technology, things that they do a lot more than I do. They're starting a robotics club up there. We've hired a new director for the Chesapeake Bay Governor's School that starts, yeah, July 1, and today we just did our end-of-year fiscal rollover and everything else with that. I think I've already commented on Ms. Haley and gifted, that was last month we finished that one, so that would conclude my reports then, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Sears.
Mr. Chair, we had a Commonwealth Governor's School meeting, and we kind of closed out the year and set our kind of new goals for the upcoming year, and I'm really excited for the growth that we're seeing in many different categories. So I'm very thankful for Dr. Almohandro and all that she's doing at the Governor's School, and that is it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Rollins Fells.
Yes, I want to say a special shout-out to our CTE camp that's going on now. Really enjoyed and hope the community is enjoying the pictures that are on Facebook. I did see that there were 87 students who have participated in that, and so hopefully that'll open their eyes to some different opportunities and prepare them for the programming here at the high school. Since last month, my updates are, I've attended the Virginia High School League meeting, did a regional meeting in Northern Virginia, the VSBA Board of Directors meeting, and then attended the School Law Conference, which is one of my favorites with all of you, and so I think we learned some really good things. And I do have one update and then a request. From one of our joint board meetings, there was an action item for us to revisit the CIP process, and so if we can just put that back on the radar to talk about what that process is as an educational piece. Those are my committee updates.
Thank you, Dr. Fells. Mr. Fortune.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The only committee update that I have regard, the VSBA School Law Conference that I attended with all of my colleagues on the dais, it was definitely very informative, and I think it positions us well to continue our role in governance, and I will have additional comments later on in the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Hubbard.
Set count to a, count 1,000, okay. The Law Conference, obviously, as my colleagues have commented on, very informative. It offered a glimpse into, you know, a crazy world that we have out there, and the fact that we've got some very smart folks providing advice and guidance to us is very helpful. I also had the opportunity to attend the Chamber of, Fredericksburg Chamber of Commerce Workforce Development CTE, and that was a, you know, folks from throughout the region who came together to discuss the challenges of workforce development as we continue to go on. We had a few members here from staff who also attended it, it was very informative, and they fed us as well, so that was a good thing. Shout out to our softball team, and one thing I guess I could comment further on is, we're looking, University Mary Washington Dahlgren Campus is looking forward to hosting the leadership team from Caroline County Schools later in the month, and we'll feed you too. So it should be a good time, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Thank you. I would just only add that I did have an opportunity along with other board members to attend the graduation this year. Students looked good, and graduation was good, and we were very proud of Caroline County graduates. We have a lot of students who are entering various colleges and universities across the country. We have students who are returning students to various colleges and universities, which shows that you can get a quality education in Caroline. That Caroline students are some of the brightest students anywhere, and we are very proud of them. So thank you to the students and to the parents and to the staff. That's all I have at this time. That takes us to the recognition portion of our agenda. We are about to enter recognition, and we enjoy having an opportunity to recognize staff and students and community members. We ask that you would remain seated until all recognitions are complete, and then the Board will pause for a quick break for anyone that would like to dismiss. Dr. Calverick.
Good evening Chair Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, and members of the Board. Tonight, I am thrilled to announce that our CCPS Chief Operations Officer, Ms. Marcia Stevens, has been elected Vice President of the Virginia Association of School Business Officials, also known as VASBO, for fiscal year 2026. This well-deserved honor is a testament to her exceptional leadership, steadfast dedication to public education, and unwavering commitment to responsible financial stewardship. We are so proud of you, and congratulations.
Again, congratulations to Ms. Stevens. Under the recognition continued, Ms. Stevens.
Thank you. Please join us in congratulating our Supervisor of Transportation, Eric Childs, on earning the prestigious Certified Director of Pupil Transportation. This certification reflects his commitment to safety, excellence, and leadership in school transportation. The certification requires the completion of 15 Core Professional Development Series courses plus six elective courses in areas such as safety, operations, special populations, technology, or maintenance. And in addition, Eric was required to submit professional references and pass an extensive written exam to complete the certification. We are proud to have such a dedicated professional leading our team and ensuring students get to and from school safely every day. Way to go, Eric.
Congratulations again, Eric. Eric, it was only a few days ago when you were running down the hall in the middle school. Again, it shows what Caroline County has and how we take advantage of the great students that we have. Thank you again for all that you do.
Mr. Taylor.
Yeah.
May I, this, may I comment? It's about the recognition.
Oh, sure.
Okay. I can't let the moment pass, so Marcia, could you stand? Dr. Calverick, can you stand? Ms. Haley, can you stand? Eric, if you can stand, it's not about me, it's about you guys, and if you are in leadership in the room and you have completed a program, a certification, a degree, or some track that is related to your work, could you please stand? Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Uh-huh. Yeah. Yes. So here's my point. We have food service, we have principals, we have directors of instruction, we have finance, we have transportation, we have our superintendent, so I would say that Caroline County is the place to be. We have strong leadership, hello, and we are nationally recognized for the work that we do. So kudos to all of you for all that you are doing, and I just wanted to call that out because y'all are amazing.
Sydney.
I'm so sorry. I would be remiss if I did not piggyback off of what Dr. Rollins Fells said because this is a story in the making. Dr. Rollins Fells currently is the VSBA President. As she is rolling off, Mrs. Stevens and I become the President of VASBO and the President of VAS, and I believe Ms. Haley becomes the President of WELV. VASBO is the Virginia Association of School Business Associates Officers Organization, something, I was close. Yes, the money people, Money Mama, right? VAS is the Virginia Association of School Superintendents. WELV is Women Educational Leaders of Virginia, and so these are the leading organizations in Virginia. Pretty powerful to be able to say that Caroline has leaders that are guiding the way amongst our colleagues and peers, so that is an amazing tribute to the work we do together.
And again, I can't thank you enough for what you do. And I thank the folks on the dais for making those recognitions. You know, you can't do everything from the chair. So I appreciate your help and your assistance because it all serves to make us look good because we do a good job. Thank you. Now that takes us to information from the district, information data integrity update.
Good evening, Chair McKelley, Vice Chair Fortune, members of the board, and Dr. Calverick. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I would like to take a few minutes to share with you an update on the progress of the CCPS Data Transformation Initiative. When I spoke with you in December, you asked me to follow up on our data reporting process and practices. Reflecting on this past year, I can say with sincerity that it has been both challenging and incredibly rewarding, a true case of trial by fire. Despite the obstacles, we have made significant strides in how we manage data, report findings, and engage in professional learning. What we now call the CCPS Data Transformation has become more than just a process. It is a shared commitment. And that process has not only been possible because of the outstanding collaboration and unwavering dedication of our CCPS leadership. Our data transformation team is comprised of CCPS, school leaders, principals, assistant principals, registrars, specialists, counselors, and administrative assistants, and more. We began the C- CCPS cyclical, cyclical data transformation plan with the following purpose: Establish a collective accountability, identify strengths and growth opportunities, incorporate and improve data literacy opportunities, execute and evaluate through active and continuous growth. When I presented the information to this board in the fall, I was charged with two crucial questions. One, how will we prevent mistakes from happening in reporting? And two, how will we correct them? The truth is, completely preventing mistakes and errors is not feasible. We're human. Human errors happen. However, as Data Systems Management Coordinator, I have learned and continue to deepen my expertise and operate in our data systems with accuracy and accountability. Often, small oversights such as a missing checkbox or omitting a teacher record can cause significant issues in state reporting and reports to the board. To mitigate these, the CCPS Data Transformation Team is dedicated to identifying and correcting errors through audits, process, documentation, collaboration with Power School Support, and ongoing professional training. Additionally, I want to acknowledge the valuable advice from Dr. Rollins-Fells, not only, not to rely only on one report, to build another report. This perspective has been instrumental in shaping how we ensure data integrity in managing complex systems like Power School. In response to that, I have implemented checks and balances to maintain the highest standards of data accuracy, including comparing data tables from different sources, two- to three-person review, and workshopping together for setup. This includes registrar workshops, administrative assistant workshops, principals workshops. And I'm happy to say that as of right now, in comparison to last year, we have forty errors right now in the SRC as opposed to eight hundred last year. So it's working. I refer to the process as the three As: authenticity, accuracy, and accountability. The data transformation team began with a simple but powerful question. What comes to mind when you hear the word "data"? This sparked candid conversations from spreadsheets and test scores to feeling of uncertainty and even fear. Together, as leaders, we identified six main focus areas, recognized barriers, and developed solutions. The team was subdivided into champions who met regularly, sharing updates and strategies through principal roundtable, workshops, one-on-one training, and other professional learning opportunities. The project spans the entire district in an effort to educate, identify, and improve CCS data reporting with authenticity, accuracy, and accountability. Some barriers that we faced included champions new to their roles, lack of prior experience with data reporting, limited data literacy, unfamiliar with their data management system. It was inspiring to witness the tremendous growth over the year. Collectively, CCPS has engaged in professional learning conferences, Power School University workshops, and one-on-one sessions. As someone new and very green to this position, I attended Power School University last year and completed training courses that I could bring back to CCPS. Registars, counselors attended the Virginia Power School Users Group Conference at Roanoke last year. And under the leadership of Beth Hauser and myself, the registrars attended Power School workshops during professional learning days where the PSU Train the Trainer model made a huge impact. Registers have attended virtual and one-on-one training sessions with me to hone their craft. If you haven't thanked a registrar lately, go by and do so. They are magicians. Similarly, under the leadership of Rachel Wheeler and supported by Building Leadership, secondary school counselors have attended workshops for master scheduling. And as you can see, this has been a collective effort with a foundation laid with a dedication to improvement through professional development. So where do we go from here? We never stop learning and we never stop improving and we never stop looking to make it better. We never stop our professional learning, which remains the cornerstone of our success, whether through Power School University, the Virginia Power School Users Group Conference, or division-wide training, or even our Power Up webinars. Our personal, our personnel are more confident, conversations about data are happening, and partnerships with other divisions and the broader Power School community have strengthened. I must admit, I have called 1-800-KINGGEORGE more than I can count. I have identified, we have identified key opportunities and accomplishments to include a new Power School onboarding process developed in collaboration with Paige Tucker and the AR staff, the addition of Power School Help Ticketing System to assess the timely and efficient assistance for all across the division, registrar workshops fostering training and collaboration, establishing data champions responsible for specific reporting elements to enhance ownership, active participation in professional learning such as PSU, the VAP Users Group, Power School, Power Ups, Power Trainings, and webinars, and significant progress in timely and accurate reporting across departments for state reporting. This is an ongoing process. It's evolutionary process. Our data systems and requirement are continuously evolving. Our next steps include reflection through program evaluation identifying remaining barriers, what is working, what opportunities are there for improvement, continuing professional learning opportunities nationally, statewide, and locally to include attending Power School Universities' Train the Trainer, Division Training Series for Building Administrators and Counselors, Assistant Principals and Administrative Assistants, that actually happened partly yesterday, conducting division-wide audits of current user roles and courses in relation to state requirements and the CCPS Program Guide of Study, striving for more timely and accurate state reporting data, and to that effect, establishing reasonable schedules for due dates and checkpoints that will empower champions to take authentic ownership with accuracy and accountability. Thank you for your continued support as we move forward with this critical work. Together, we are building a stronger, more data-informed future for Caroline County public schools. I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Have questions at this time?
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. I completely geeked out over your, your update because this is my world. And I want to say thank you so much. As a board member in this seat, we are a data-driven and data-informed board. And there are huge impacts when we are not. And so I appreciate, and what I wrote was, I appreciate your approach. I appreciate that your strategy was very clear. And I appreciate that in, that your tenure here, you have brought value to the positions that you have served in, and I wanted to note that publicly. So thank you so much for the work that you're doing and I'm excited to see where this goes.
Thank you very much.
Other board members? If not, thank you very much for what you do and we do realize the importance of data. It helps us to substantiate the needs that we have and to prove that we are one hashtag Caroline, and we're doing a great job. So thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us to the next agenda item, the modular units.
Good evening, Chair Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, members of the board, and Dr. Calverick. Tonight, I'm pleased to give you a brief update on the, where we're at with the modular With the BGES Principals and Leadership Team gathered to discuss August, August 25th readiness, the following benefits to learn, to learning cottages were highlighted. For the ease of consumption, they have been categorized into four areas: modular access and affordability, addressing enrollment and capacity issues, programming, preserve instructional spaces, support staff retention, and maintains all BGS students on campus. On this slide is the BGS Modular Floor Plan. The Board of Supervisors appropriated FY '24 school year-end funds for the project on May 27th. CCPS approved the plans and specs and placed the color, placed the color selection order on May 30th. An A and E survey and fencing walkthrough were conducted on June 3rd. An intercom, intercom and fire alarm purchase order was submitted on June 5th. Last week, there has been further discussion with Caroline County Code Compliance, Caroline Department of Utilities, and conducted a coordinate, and conducting a coordination meeting with RRM, Rapahannock Electric, Wilmont, and Centennial Contracting to develop levels Color selections were made, as you can see here. Met with Marcia and Dr. Calverick in a meeting to go over color selections. Gallery Blue was chosen for the Mansford trim, Mansford body, exterior top trim, and the exterior door body. Polar White was chosen for the exterior side trim, exterior siding body, and exterior door trim, and exterior window trim. Sterling was chosen for the block tile. Sorry. Sterling was chosen for the block tile, white speckled, black and white speckled was chosen for the partition walls in the restroom, and Paris White for the BCT flooring, and carbon black for the Cove base. Here we have the new modular clash, modular unit location pictured for the upcoming, pictured and for upcoming events and next steps. We expect to have a civil site plan for review on June 13th. After receiving that civil site plan and approving it, working with Jason, the county building official, he will let us supply for permit and site plan review prior to getting the actual stamped plans from Wilmont, the sealed plans. He will let us process that paperwork so that we can have permit in hand. Once we receive the sealed plans, we can get those over to him. We also have two ramps that are in design. I did see a preliminary drawing of the ramps yesterday, June 10th. Geotech tech testing for soil compaction is being scheduled. Code compliance is not accepting the nuclear gauge field density test reports for this area that were conducted in 2012, so we are moving forward to get our own set of testing done. We currently are looking at classroom equipment needs with stakeholders and talking with our vendors. And as mentioned before, a coordination meeting was held on June 10th with Wilmont, coordination meeting was held on June 10th. The Wilmont Bill Factory has our modules in the queue for production and is expected to release the completed units by July 21st. Modular classrooms will travel from their facility in Georgia and are expected to arrive on-site by July 28th. Installation will begin with the arrival of the first unit. With a move-in expected to commence on August 4th. We are currently working with Caroline County Develop, Department of Utilities with the discovery of a six-inch water line under the center of the basketball court. They proposed us moving the line as of yesterday. I've been in contact with Mr. Shebel and we had given him a counterproposal and he was reviewing that today. Utilities was also requesting a fixture count to connect, Bowling Green Elementary School to connect the water lines to Bowling Green Elementary to serve the modular classrooms. This issue was resolved this morning and no upgrades will be needed to the current water meter at BGES. Thank you for your attention and at this time, I would take any questions or comments.
Board members have questions?
If I may, a thorough brief, thank you. Recognizing the supply chain with regards to IT, I did not hear any mention of IT ordering or that goes along with that. And there is a supply chain challenge that we have to go through. Have we taken that into consideration? I'm sure we have. And if you could just give us an idea.
It's probably on the slide but not in my notes, but I do know that that PO was June 2nd was when that PO was issued. Joey, you can speak on that?
Yes, we've already been quoted and sent the PO over, so it should start arriving whenever it's available. Nothing that I know of is, is.
Back order.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
Can you go back one slide? What is this red arrow on this graphic?
The red arrow indicates the point of entry the students would have back into the main building. There is a badge reader on that bill, on that door as well. And we are looking at, for a hall pass to get back into the building of having a temporary badge that we could assign as a pass back in unless, you know, programmatically, you know, we need to escort. So I know there's a meeting tomorrow on the, the who and the where.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I would like to respectfully request that we have a monthly update until installation is complete.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I just want to commend you, Chris, and your team for the yeoman's work that you've done on this particular project to date. And I know that the yeoman's work that will continue to happen to ensure that we meet our targeted move-in date. So thank you for the progress that you've made and we definitely look forward to continued updates.
Thank you.
Any other board questions?
Mr. Call, I just want to say thanks for the work I know you've done. We've been getting a lot of superintendent updates and a lot of pictures about not this but everything else in the county. I know that most of the staff, it's a little bit more of a leisure time of the year, but not for you and your cohorts. You guys are really burning the midnight oil because those, just like teachers, when it comes time to get the grades in, those dates are non-negotiable. Like we start and we stop and we stop. And I just wanted to say thanks for all the work that you and the staff have done so far do throughout the summer to get ready for next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other board comments? If not, again, thank you, Chris, so much for all of your help and your staff. We were a little bit shaky there for a time. We didn't know whether we would take care of our student needs by August. It looks like that we are and that is directly due to the work that you guys have done along with working with the county as well. So again, we can't say thank you enough and we support what you do. Thank you.
Thank you. We're continuing to try to jump the hurdles as they come in front of us.
Okay. I can't jump too high anymore, but I'll raise my hand.
Me too.
Okay, that takes us. Okay, that takes us to preschool year-end review, Ms. Ross.
Good evening, Chair Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, members of the board, and Dr. Kelverick. This evening, I'm excited to share a preschool year-end review that showcases the amazing things happening in our program. I will begin by highlighting a few of our 24-25 program and student successes, share a few of the experiences that our students participated in, share an instructional highlight spotlighting the Fitness Dogs program, the outcome of our Head Start audit, and finally, a few previews for the upcoming 25-26 school year. To begin, I will share a few of our proudest moments from this year. First, we had 213 students successfully complete the school year. Approximately 70 were three-year-olds and 143 were four-year-olds. Keep in mind that the 73-year-olds will return for the 25-20 school year for an additional year of preschool. The 24-25 school year was our second year of implementation of the Frog Street curriculum and our first year that we offer the continuum where students, where teachers were given resources for infant, toddler, three- and four-year-old developmental stages at their fingertips to provide differentiated instruction to all of our youngest learners. Next, the CCPS preschool program remained fully staffed for the entire school year, and we are retaining 90% of our staff for the 25-26 year. Out of our 15 teachers, we have five teachers licensed for early childhood, six teachers currently working towards their early childhood licensure, and four teachers that HR is working with to get them enrolled in the I Teach program. Out of the 15 paraprofessionals, a total of 10 completed their CDA credentialing this school year, and our three elementary family engagement coordinators completed the Head Start Family Services Certification coursework. All of this to say that we are committed to supporting our staff with continued learning and ensuring that our program is compliant. And finally, at the end of this year, parents were asked to complete a brief survey regarding their child's experience, and out of the 213 families, we're excited to say that we received 140 responses, much more than the year before. And after reviewing all survey responses, 83% of our families were satisfied with the preschool program and believe that their child learned many new skills and flourished socially, and 86% of our families said that they believe that their child was excited to come to school each day and learn. I think this data speaks volumes regarding the relationships between our teaching staff and our families. Also during the school year, our students were exposed to new learning that encouraged family participation. In November, virtual gratitude nights were hosted for each school. Families listened to read alouds, participated in scavenger hunts around their home, and parents learned how to support their child with nightly journaling. All activities were focused on understanding and expressing gratitude and promoting interactive family activities. In recognition of National Reading Month in March, our families and community members supported preschool classrooms by being guest readers, either in person or virtually, and we had a total of 109 parents, community members, and staff that volunteered to read and engage our youngest learners. The CCPS preschool program has partnered with Wolf Trap, the foundation for performing arts for the last four years. Incorporating the arts in early childhood education is proven to engage our young learners in deeper, more meaningful learning experiences. But teachers need tools to make it possible, and that's where Wolf Trap teaching artists come in. During the month of February, each classroom participated in a week-long residency. Professional teaching artists worked with preschool children in the classrooms, sharing art-integrated learning strategies, helped teachers develop lesson plans, and interacted with our children. Classroom residencies have empowered our preschool staff by providing them with customized hands-on teaching strategies that they can apply in their future lessons. And in addition, during the residency week, the Wolf Trap artists hosted family nights at each of our elementary schools so parents could be exposed to what their child was learning in the classroom. Another partner to the preschool program is Friends of the Rappahannock. We have partnered with Robyn Didlake and Friends of the Rappahannock for three years now to provide outdoor learning experiences aligned with recent classroom instruction on nature and wildlife. Classes participate in rotational centers that promote curiosity, observation, and scientific thinking. This year's hands-on lessons were focused on animals, their habitats, and the elements of the natural learning environment. Students were able to see and feel animal feathers, turkey feet, and they categorize animals as wild or non-wild based on their characteristics. Our newest partner is the Fitness Dogs. They have had a huge impact in such a short amount of time. At the beginning of this school year, our staff began implementation of the Fitness Dogs nutrition and physical activity curriculum. Dr. Kim Evans is a retired superintendent, and Dr. Addie Briggs is a pediatrician, and they are the co-founders of the program. The curriculum features dog characters such as Fido and Fifi that introduce children to new foods and physical activity. Our children tried new foods during lessons, along with learning the importance of making good food choices and daily movement and exercise. Families supported their child at home by completing activity logs, and once four activity logs were completed and returned to school, our students received a free pass to a trampoline or jump park. Dr. Evans and Dr. Briggs not only supported the curriculum implementation by providing professional learning to our staff and hosting kickoff assemblies at each school, they have actively supported our preschool policy council and health advisory committee by sharing their expertise and educating our families about the importance of childhood obesity and leading a healthier lifestyle. As mentioned earlier, the huge impact of this partnership in a short amount of time, our data indicates just that. In the fall, staff gave a pre-test to each child with four very simple questions, and in May, they gave the post-assessment. The screen before you displays the questions and the answer choices. So for example, the first question asks simply, what is better for your body, a doughnut or an apple? And you can see from those post results that they clearly indicate a better awareness with a 37% increase for the answer to that question. And of course, for the remainder of the questions, you can see increases from plus 25% up to plus 43%. Needless to say, we are very pleased with the curriculum in partnership with the Fitness Dogs. Exposing our youngest learners to diet and workout has proven to be a great success. For one of our culminating events this school year, the preschool staff participated in a week-long Head Start FA2 programmatic audit, where evidence was collected for program design and management, education and child development, health services, family and community engagement, fiscal infrastructure, infrastructure, and URC. URC is eligibility, recruitment, selection, enrollment, and attendance. The screen before you shows the six overarching categories that I just mentioned and the 22 subcategories. An SP, the key at the bottom, shows that SP is an area of strong practice, C is an area of compliance, and NC is an area of non-compliance. Overall, we had four of the six overarching categories with strong practices. In program design and management, specific to staffing and supports. In education and child development, specific to mental health and well-being. And in URC, two categories specifically recruitment and eligibility. We were compliant in 15 of the subcategories, and we had two areas, health and oral health and fiscal management, that were noted as a non-compliant. It is important to share that the non-compliance for health and oral health was due to obtaining initial dental and health determinations after the 90-day window. We partner with Conexus and Caroline Dental Office for these screenings, and the students that entered late into our program missed the screening windows. So our plan is to, we already have our plan in place to resolve this. We are beginning screenings this summer. We are collaborating with the Caroline's Promise Community Day. We've also moved to the beginning of the schedules for both Conexus and the dental office to ensure that we are capturing our screenings well before that 90-day requirement, and that will allow us more time for follow-up with families. The area of non-compliance and fiscal was due to not completing a no-property report for the 23-24 school year, and this wasn't oversight on our part. Even though we have not used federal funds to purchase any real properties, we must still complete the form to show zero. The reports have been submitted, and the finding is resolved. And please be assured that the 24-25 report will be filed prior to the August 31 deadline this year. Overall, our audit was a great learning experience for all of our staff, and we could not have done it without the help and support of all preschool staff, our family engagement coordinators, our nurses, and of course, our building administrators. What's to come for the 25-26 school year? If I've not exhausted you already, let me tell you what's next. I previously mentioned we are taking part of the Caroline's Promise Back-to-School event. Our incoming families have been invited to bring their child in for early health and vision screenings, receive school supplies, and meet staff. At a previous school board meeting, we shared our vision for the peer modeling classes for next year, and I'm happy to report that we have seven staff members taking advantage of this retention benefit. And as we continue to recruit staff, this retention benefit is being offered. And we are busy planning for conscious discipline family workshops to engage our parents in their child's learning, model self-regulation strategies that are being utilized in our classrooms, and empower our parents to be, to encourage, be empathetic, set boundaries, and support their child with making good choices. And finally, we are adding in two new events that will invite our parents into the classrooms during the day. Our first activity will take place in the fall, and our preschool children and families will have an opportunity to paint and decorate pumpkins together. And then in the spring, we are going to host a family fly-a-kite day. The CCPS preschool program is committed to continuous improvement on behalf of our children and family and are very proud of this year's accomplishments, and we look forward to many more successes in the coming year. And I'm happy to answer any questions or anything at this time. Thank you.
Board members have questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I make a, an observation. As a member of the Policy Council, the parents and the participants with whom I've spoken with, without you present, have done a, gone above and beyond to applaud and to compliment your leadership in this capacity. You have built a culture where everyone feels valued and opinions welcomed, and for many, that's important. And with the continuing outreach with the families, getting family members engaged early on in this process, the likelihood of keeping them along increases exponentially. So I applaud you personally, and I applaud your staff for their stellar work and their stellar effort. I will continue to support you in whatever capacity you need, and I see we did get a compliance on the engagement piece there, so we're good to go.
We did, we did, yes.
So congratulations to you, and look forward to even bigger and better things next school term. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hubbard. Appreciate that.
Other board members?
Yes, sir. Can you go back a slide? Sorry, I'm the go-back-a-slide lady tonight. This one with the audit. So from this seat, this is what I was looking for, especially in the context of a lot of conversation in the community around our programming. And I just wanted to call out that what I noted was strong practice under staffing and supports, strong practice with teaching strategies and learning environment, strong practice with recruitment. And so in plain English, we have the right kids in the right programs. We have the right people in the room with them, and they are doing the right thing. The second piece that I looked at with this is the category headings going across the top. And again, I keep talking about this community needs assessment and the health assessment, and I just want for public record to draw attention to what this program offers and how this directly meets the needs of our community. So the data and this audit really speak to the value of this program, and I will continue to champion for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other board members? Mr. Kelly?
Sir, Dr. Ross, thank you again for all the information and especially all this on the, the privilege of sitting there and getting interviewed with all of that. Question is, is what I would like to know is moving forward with Ms. Tucker and HR hiring through HR, if that's part of our report that we would do annually, I know we did all the buildings and everything. Is that embedded? Was that in your information as well?
Yes.
Okay. So how do, how are we looking specifically like with staff members?
So we already, I'm working, the two openings that we have are at Bowling Green, and Mrs. Hextall and I have been working together the last few days. I think our offer is going out to one, and we have a very strong prospect. I'm the second teacher already. The goal is to have them in place and ready for train, the training week of July 21, and Mrs. Hextall has to hire an additional assistant for an additional position, and then another assistant. But we're working on the teacher first, teachers first, and then we're working our way to the instructional assistants.
Just curious. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other board members? Again, thank you very much again for what you do, and I would just add that the benefit of this program is not going to be seen just this year. It's going to be seen for years to come because these kids are going to go on to elementary school and middle school and high school, and they're going to be better students because we have joined in with them as early as possible to try to work with them and to provide the kind of instruction that's going to make them good, strong students. So thank you so much for that. Having said that, that takes us to the revenues and expenditures. Dr. Farley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman Fortune, members of the board, Dr. Kelverick. I'll be presenting the May FY25 financials this evening. Operating revenues for May were 4.6 million, with year-to-date revenues of 57.9 million, or 91.47%. Special fund revenues for May were $413,000, with year-to-date revenues of 7 million, or 69.62%. Total revenues for all funds for May were 5.1 million, with year-to-date totals of 65 million, or 88.46%. Operating expenditures for May were 6.5 million, with year-to-date expenditures of 52 million, or 82.47%. Special funds expenditures for May were $460,000, with 6.7 million year-to-date, or 66.97%. Total expenditures for all funds for May were 6.9 million, with year-to-date totals of 59 million, or 80.34%. Lastly, I'll share a couple of updates. The state revenues for May includes the one-time bonus for standards of quality, the SOQ-funded instructional and support personnel. The allocation for CCPS was 400, or is $452,000. Next, we're relatively very close when you look at the alternate graph we provide in both year-to-date revenues and expenditures compared to a year ago in FY24. And then lastly, we've received county reconciliations up through April 1st at this point, so that's still in work, and we're hoping over the next couple of weeks as we close out the fiscal year to be able to close those reconciliations up. Happy to take any questions from the board.
Board members have questions? If not, thank you, Dr. Farley.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
The ADM, Dr. Farley, are you up for the ADM? That's okay.
Tried to sneak out.
That's okay.
And that's actually touche because I've been giving these reports, and we've been skipping ADM, and now I left and you got me, so we're even. Well played, Mr. Taylor. Hey. She's on the ball. So good evening again, Chair Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, members of the board, and Dr. Kelverick. I'll present the average daily membership update for May 2025. Average daily membership is determined by dividing the total aggregate daily membership by the number of days schools in session during the school year. The May year-to-date principals' ADM report was 4,287.529. The final year-to-date total was 4,327.108. We have to take any questions on the May ADM report.
Questions for Dr. Farley?
I did have a question. And I just may have read too fast. The 25 budgeted ADM is 4320, and there was a comment. In the middle of the report, come down to the next section, where it talks about the loss of ADM. Is that from this year's budget or from, from the next year's projected budget?
So we presented at the last meeting that we would have a loss of ADM, went through the explanation, the students who are in the CISNA regional program and also CSA. And so those students, well, when we looked at that budget projection and the ADM projection, that $287,000 is going into this school year. So it's from the March 31 ADM report. So we're down $287,000 based on ADM.
For the end of this year?
This year, correct.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Sure.
Other board members have questions?
Workshop.
Yes.
Last, okay.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Farley.
Thank you.
That takes us to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that need to be pulled up? Board members have questions? If not, we can entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the consent.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in properly, second that we would approve the consent agenda as presented. Lisa, would you call for the vote?
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Brown spells?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye. And the motion carries. That takes That takes us to citizen comments. The Carolina County School Board welcomes public comments during regular meetings and public hearings. Speakers may address an item on the board meeting agenda or an item not on the agenda during this time. All comments should address a matter related to Carolina County Public Schools. Each speaker may speak for up to three minutes. Once you see the red light on the traffic light positioned in front of the clerk, please make your last statement. The school board chair is responsible for recognizing all speakers, for maintaining proper order, and for adhering to the time limits stated above. The chair is authorized to stop and/or have removed any speaker who uses language that is obscene, constitutes fighting words, true threats, or solicitation to commit crimes, and incites imminent lawless action. Moreover, the chair may stop and/or have removed any person who disrupts the orderly functioning of the meeting by making loud, boisterous, or threatening comments. Once you come to the lectern, if you have not signed in with the clerk, please complete the appearance request form, state your name and your district. At this time, the clerk will call those who have signed up prior to the meeting.
Sarah Cutt?
Good evening, Chair Taylor and Vice Chair Fortune, members of the board, and Dr. Calverick. My name is Sarah Cutt, and I currently reside in the Bowling Green Voting District. For many years, I was a very proud CCPS teacher, and I never saw myself teaching anywhere else. Leaving BGE was one of the hardest professional decisions I have ever made. I found a support village and so much personal growth, and for those reasons, I will be forever grateful to CCPS. Recently, I attended a school leadership conference in my new district, and I had the pleasure of learning from Jimmy Kossis. If you've never looked him up, he's wonderful. He's an educator and author that focuses on school culture. He spoke to us about the topic of his book, Culturize. In his keynote, he started with a quote that's really stuck with me for the last 10 days. He said, "Leadership is not about how you respond when you know what to do, but rather how you respond when you don't know what to do." So let's be honest, none of us are in favor of these learning colleges. We don't want them. However, they are the current reality. My current school had them delivered this week. I have seven modulars that are getting put together to build five classrooms and an office. So we're there too, we feel you. But here we are. So I looked at the strategic plan for Caroline. I love the strategic plan. I remember listening to it last year in the development process and really enjoyed it, and I'm doing it now in my current district. I have to say, I loved your process. And it says, "We created inclusive culture when teaching and learning inspire and prepare students to become contributing citizens." Nowhere in the strategic plan does it say in what type of classroom. We as school leaders, school staff, taxpayers, family, and CCPS, we have to adjust our mindset to match that mission. So, just a thought for you. And then, and then, we want our students to thrive and be well-rounded citizens. That's our job as community members, as school board, as school staff. But there was one other question he left us with, and when I tell you, this one has stuck with me, it is literally in my planner for next year already. It says, "Do the behaviors of the adults in your school," or in our case, school system, "match the words on your walls?" So our mission is on the wall. And to be perfectly honest, sometimes our actions don't match our words. I know that was a huge toe-stomping challenge for me. So I challenge you to think of this question when you have continued conversations and discussions with the board of supervisors, school staff, and yourselves. We are a model of what our students project to the community. If we want to them to adjust to unconventional learning spaces, then we have to make our behavior match as well. No one wants a cottage, but they're here. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Are there other persons who would like to speak at this time? Are there other citizens who would like to speak at this time? Are there other citizens who would like to speak at this time? Seeing no one with a desire to speak, I will close the citizen comment period, and thank you. That takes us to our first agenda action item, 10A, Student Code of Conduct.
Great evening, Chair Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, members of the board, and Dr. Calverick. I am before you tonight requesting approval of the CCPS Student Code of Conduct for the 2025-2026 school year, either with or without the cell phone policy included. The only other change is increasing the cost for students to replace broken or lost Chromebooks from $250 to $350.
Board members, are there questions or concerns regarding the code of conduct? If not, we can entertain a motion to approve the...
Mr. Chair? Make motion to approve the code of conduct with the cell phone policy?
Second.
It's been moved in properly, second that we approve the code of conduct with the cell phone policy. Stevens, would you call for the vote?
Dr. Rollins Fells? Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye, and the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to the approval of the math, Dr. Neighbors, Ms. Haley.
Good evening, Chair Kelly, Vice Chair Fortune, Superintendent Dr. Calverick, and members of the board. I'm honored alongside Ms. Haley to bring forward for final review the CCPS Math High Quality Instructional Materials, which supports Goal One, Teaching and Learning and Math Literacy of Achieve 2027, and highlights our collective commitment to having resources that support a system of quality education. Tonight, Beth Bernapp, Instructional Specialist for K-12 Mathematics, will share the recommendation, updated costs, and overview of the implementation for board approval. Beth?
Good evening. As we prepare to implement both KIDM for grades K-5 and MathSpace for grades 6-12, our focus is on building a strong foundation for long-term success. This graphic illustrates a phased approach we will follow, beginning with in-person training for both programs in late July and early August, aligned with the return of teachers for the upcoming school year. This initial training will serve as a cornerstone for our first year of implementation. Moving forward, teachers and instructional leaders will engage in ongoing professional learning, supported by resources from the Virginia Department of Education, including the HQIM Implementation Tool and Mathematics Playbook. These supports will guide our curriculum and instruction team through a multi-year journey of continuous growth and instructional improvement.
In your folders, you have the details of the final quotes for both the K-5 program, KIDM, and the 6-12 program, MathSpace. We are seeking final approval at this time. Are there any questions prior to?
Yes. Okay. First of all, positive comment. We had the work session day before yesterday, and we got some really good news about the success that we've had with Benchmark and those tools. So my hope is that, you know, if this is adopted tonight, that we will see similar success in the areas of mathematics. So let's, let's hope for that. My question though is, I'm trying to get a total price tag here. So, you know, Math for Marines would tell me that I'm adding 564,217 plus the 96,768 to get the total?
Correct.
And that is, I'm not doing math in public, but what is, what is the total?
Yeah, that totals out. Eight hundred, $10,000.
Eight hundred and $10,000, okay. And change.
And some change.
Some change.
Thank you.
Other board members? Dr. Calverick?
I just wanted to clarify once again that the, the funding from this comes out of our textbooks fund, right? That's supervisors, so it's money that, if we don't spend it every year, correct?
That is correct.
Right. As such, I move for approval of the math HQIM as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in properly, second that we would approve the math HQIM, which means High Quality Instructional Material, as presented. Ms. Stevens, would you call for the vote?
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Fells?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye, and it stands approved. That takes us to action item C, Approval of 2025-26 Title III Application. Dr. Neighbors?
Good evening, Chairman Taylor, Vice Chairman Fortune, members of the board, and Superintendent Dr. Calverick. Tonight, I'd like to present a final read of our Title III Language Instruction for English Learners and Immigrant Students Grant for Approval. Sorry. Again, with this grant, our priorities live in instructional resources, professional learning, and family engagement to continue to support our L students and our growing population. Our budget for approval is $18,142.16. Do you have any questions at this time?
Board members have questions at this time?
Of course, of course. First point is, we're going to educate everyone who walks through our doors, period. And if we need the dollars to do it, I'll be the first one to say yay. But we will educate everyone, every student who walks through our doors.
Any questions, comments? If not, we can entertain a motion at this time? Is there a second? Second. It's been moved in properly, second that we would approve the Title III, I'm sorry, the Title I application. I'm sorry, Title III application. All, Ms. Stevens, would you call for the vote?
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Fells?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye, and it stands approved.
Thank you.
That takes us to Agenda Item D, 2025-26 Title I Application.
Good evening, Chair Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, members of the board, and Dr. Calverick. At the May School Board Meeting, I presented the first read of the 25-26 Title I Grant, which included the preliminary Title I Award in the amount of $867,715.72. Since the May Board Meeting, revisions have been made for staff salaries and benefits that are reflective of the 3% raise plus a step increase. No other changes have been made to the application. At this time, I'm asking for board approval, but of course, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have at this time.
Does board members have questions at this time?
Ms. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve, if there aren't any questions, approve the program's presentation as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in properly, second that we would approve the program's presentation as presented. Ms. Stevens, would you call for the vote?
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Fells?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye, and it stands approved. That takes us to Agenda Item F, 2025-26 Title IV Application. Ms. Ross? I'm sorry.
Title II.
Title II, excuse me.
I have all of them in a row, so thank you. This evening, I come before the board for approval of the 2025-2026 Title II Application with a preliminary allocation of $155,409.17. Since the May Board Meeting, grammatical revisions were made and costs were updated for contracted services. At this time, I'm asking for board approval and am happy to answer any questions.
Board members have questions about the Title II grant? If not, we can entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved in properly, second that we approve the Title II Grant Application as presented. Ms. Stevens, would you call for the vote?
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Fells?
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye, and the Title II Application stands approved. That takes us to Item Action F, 2025, the Title IV Application.
This evening, I'm asking for board approval of the 2025-2026 Title IV Grant with a preliminary allocation of $72,118.47. Since the May Board Meeting, no changes have been made to the budget and/or grant application. The grant is ready for submission. So at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions, though.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the Title IV Grant Application as presented.
Second.
Been moved in properly, second that we would approve the Title IV Grant Application as presented. All in favor, let me know by saying aye. I'm sorry. Ms. Stevens, would you call for the vote?
Dr. Rollins Fells? Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye, and the Title IV Grant is approved as presented. Thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us to approval of adjustments to policies.
Good evening, Chair Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, members of the board, and Dr. Calverick. This evening, I come before you, seeking approval for generative AI additions to policies GAB and IIBEA. I am also seeking approval of regulation GAB-R and IIBEA-R, which is inclusive of the policy additions and inserts the consent to use Google Services for students under 18 years of age. At this time, are there any questions from the board?
Any questions from the board regarding the policies?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of adjustments to policies GAB and IIBEA to include generative AI and IIBEA-R to include Google Services as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in properly, second that we approve, approve policies GAB and IIBEAR as presented. Ms. Stevens, would you call for the vote?
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Fells?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye, and that, those policies approved as well. That takes us to Agenda Item H, Budget Adoption. Ms. Stevens?
Good evening, Chair Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, members of the board, and Dr. Calverick. I'm pleased to present to you the FY24 Operational Budget for Adoption. Tonight, we have four major objectives to achieve during this budget presentation, a quick overview of the context for our fiscal year 25 budget process, an overview of the state budget, CCPS, FY26 budget accomplishments, and the budget financials associated with revenues, expenditures, and special funds. The development process is intentional, inclusive, and transparent, and considers various internal and external stakeholders and factors. A brief overview of these elements will heighten your understanding of our budget process. The foundation of the budget development process is the five-year strategic plan, Achieve 2027. It serves as a filter for all our decision-making and fiscal appropriations. Before overarching goals of strategic plan are teaching and learning relationships, health and safety, and talent management, and these guides the division's daily work and help ensure alignment of our physical resources with the school division's identified needs and goals. Our budget development process reflects the multifaceted approach, which expands from multiple months, starting in October of 2024 through May of 2025, actually going on into June this year with the submission of the budget requests to the advisory group, stakeholder surveys, lobbying, and legislation, public hearings, school-based budget presentations, and collaboration with our local government officials. We are committed to developing and delivering a needs-based operational budget reflective of our school community needs. Ultimately, our stakeholder voice, CCPS data, and our standards of qualities and programmatic needs yields a clear funding trend for our fiscal year '26, which was people over things. With over 700 With over seven hundred individuals providing feedback, compensation, and benefits, and licensed faculty and support staff ranked as our top priorities. I will highlight key aspects of the state budget that was passed in May. The adopted state budget included the second year of the biennium, over a billion dollars of new state education funding focusing on basic aid, English learner standards of qualities, removal of a portion of the support cap, which increases our state funding for those positions, introduce, introduction of special education add-on, and the three percent compensation increase for the SOQ positions. The majority of our state funding is provided to the school division based on the average daily membership. The ADM is the membership of the students from the first day of school until March thirty-first of each year. We had discussed this in the last, um, Board meeting as to where we were with our ADM this year at four, four-two-seven-six-nineteen. I still have in the budget at this time four-three-forty, as we are continuing to manage our enrollments over the summer and seeing an increase in those numbers. We will, of course, be monitoring that throughout the year with you all on a monthly basis, and we'll make adjustments throughout the year, and in the beginning, if we need to, we will adjust accordingly. The local composite index is the calculation of the local locality's true value of property, adjusted gross income and taxable sales. The formula determines the locality's ability to pay education costs for K-12 education, and the LCI goes up, the state funding goes down. The Caroline County's LCI for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six did decrease with a three-point-one percent decrease, and note that this data is from twenty twenty-one. The next biennium, we will see an adjustment for the LCI. This year's principal and department requests submitted forty-nine budget requests, each aligned to achieve twenty twenty-seven our strategic goal or objective. Each item was reviewed, categorized as mandatory critical need or a need or a want, and I will introduce now the funded priorities that we have been able to achieve in fiscal year twenty-six. So let's begin with compensation and benefits. CCPS approved a three percent in- increase inclusive of step for all employees. This aligns with the governor's proposed three percent increase as well, uh, for the biennium for all SOQ positions. The cost of that three percent for the division is one point three-five million dollars. In addition, we have made great strides to improving our teacher compensation over the past three years, so our support scale remains behind the regional peers. I'm pleased to be able to state that we have made significant strides for fiscal year twenty-six, increasing our starting pay from twelve dollars and eighty-eight cents to thirteen dollars and seventy-five cents. And this increase was targeted at our instructional assistants, custodians, and food service technicians and cashiers, and the cost of that scale enhancement was a one point oh-five million dollars. It does not put us at the top of the pack, however, it does make great strides for us. I do want to, um, just give a quick overview of our compensation accomplishments that we've made over the past several years. Um, we've been making great strides with funneling the majority of our resources received from the state and the county to the compensation of our staff. So in twenty-two, we did a targeted compensation raise for the bus drivers and, and the car drivers. In twenty-three, we did targeted compensation for custodians, grounds, paras, food service, receptionists, attendants clerk, and also a seven percent increase provided to all employees. In twenty-three, we were able to implement step one of the teacher salary scale of zero to eighteen, and we were able to, um, use that, the in ADM that we received that year to be able to fund that step one implementation. After we implemented that step one, we were able to adjust our s- scales for fiscal year twenty-four to give a five percent inclusive of step to all employees. And then also in January of that year, we were able to give an additional percent. So that year, we received six percent for all our employees inclusive of a step. In twenty-five, we funded a three percent step plus, um, three percent plus a step for all of our employees. And then this year, we are able to do that three percent for all employees and that educational support scale adjustment. For our health insurance, we received the renewal of twelve percent increase. The cost of the premium increase for the employer, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for that. And just as a reminder, with that twelve percent increase, we are quite volatile over the years, and over our eight-year reigns, we are at eight point one-six. So we're hanging in there with the national and the state average increase on our health insurance. Exceptional Education Department, we utilize, um, outside agencies currently, so we were able to build in five skilled nurses into the, um, budget, three hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and nine. The LPNs will support the medical needs of our students outlined in the IAPs. Um, they currently provide medical services such as feeding tubes, support, seizure disorder support, catheterization, physical support for shunts, et cetera. Per the Code of Virginia, these are funded in the admin, attendance, and health category. I want to be sure I'm clear about that because you will see later a large increase to the administration category. The exceptional ed, we are also approving three instructional aides and one's teacher for a, um, low-incident classroom at Madison. We're also proud to say that this year, we were able to build in four building case managers. With the nationwide teacher shortage, we have significant impact on our education, our exceptional education with having a limited availability of licensed teacher. This will allow us to have a case manager in each building, with also reclassing a position currently for a sped teacher novice coach that will be one per building, building case manager. This will help with the teacher being able to do the education delivery in their classroom and mastering those skills while having a building case manager assist with the case management. For student support services, we have the conversion of two ten-and-a-half month to one, to two ten-and-a-half month counselors to eleven-month counselors in order to support the master schedule completion and their online graduation monitoring, as well as doing their progress of the three performance framework. It will allow our counselors also to have, be able to meet that Virginia code of eighty percent of their time to be hip-to-hip with students. We're also having an addition of a point five school counseling, counseling position for Bowling Green, um, with the increased number of student risk assessments. This will have Bowling Green have three full-time counselors versus two and a half currently. For general education teachers, we have a reading coach and innovation specialist. Both of those positions were funded with other funds, so the reading coach was funded with all-in funds. Innovation specialist was funded in the Title I. As you may have noticed tonight, our Title I funds are not increasing, so we have moved both of those positions to local funding for next year. We have eight-and-a-half classroom teachers, we have a point five Spanish, a full-time ASL, two electives, which will support our ag and our CTE programs, an ELA teacher for English at the high school, two English language learner positions based on the standard of qualities for English learner staffing ratios, and two unassigned FTEs at this time that can be used to work on staff size, or class size reduction ratios and CTE class reduction ratios. Um, and we are having our meetings every two weeks for enrollment, and we already see a need to place those teachers at this time with our growing enrollment. For support staff, the admin intern currently at Bowling Green is in the all-in grant. Those funds have, or the position has been converted to local dollars as to continued for the leadership support of Bowling Green requiring, as they have over eight hundred and fifty students currently at this time. Also, another position that was funded in all-in is the payroll specialist, and with over eight hundred employees and the increasing of payroll task and complexities, the special, um, the payroll specialist is critical for increasing our compa- capacity and the compliance task. This position is moved now from all-in to local funding. In addition to administrative support's position for the coordinator of assessment and support services position, the position will support year-round assessment process, McKinne Vento, which we are seeing a growing population, five oh-four Medicaid tracking, and other administrative and budgetary tasks associated with federal and state regulations. In addition, our technology cycle is very important to us, and the capital improvement plan appropriates about a hundred thousand for classrooms and staff technology due to the rising cost and the increase of positions, and additional funding is needed to be able to provide this replacement cycle of our classroom technology as well as our staff technology. In addition to the Chromebooks that are provided to all of our students in the refresh cycle, this will be able to, um, for our technology team to be able to replace those Chromebooks on the refresh cycle as needed. So, very quickly, I'll outline the budget financials. I will begin with revenue by source. State revenues are projected to increase one point three-six-four million dollars of new monies. We're also seeing an increase in our other revenue category. This is due to planned purchases of E-rate equipment for fiscal year twenty-six. It is a one-time purchase, and you will see that revenue decrease back again next year. We also received additional funding in the amount of one point six-seven million dollars from the county. This funding, paired with the additional state funding, was able to support the funded priorities, which I have just reviewed with you. In addition, the county administrator has removed the funding for the five school bus replacements out of the operational budget and into the school capital budget, which explains the decline on that revenue line. Overall, the budget has increased close to two million dollars or three point one-five percent. The expenditure categories are how a school division will spend the funding during fiscal year twenty-six. The increases in the categories spread amongst multiple categories this year due to the different budget priorities. The instructional category increase is resulting from that instructional staff compensation increase and the newly proposed instructional positions. There's a larger increase than typical in that admin, attendance, and health category due to those five skilled nurses. And then transportation has decreased due to those five buses being moved to, out of the operational budget to the capital budget. Maintenance category has increased due to the large number of employees in the maintenance category that are on that educational support scale adjustment that we completed. Technologies larger increases due to the proposed E-rate, equipment purchases, and the technology purchases notated in our budget priorities. In addition to that innovation specialist moving out of special funds and into the operational budget. The special grant textbook and food service funds have been adjusted based on estimated project, projected revenues. The special grant funds is seeing a two-point-eight million dollar decrease with the expiration of that pandemic funding. The textbook fund has been adjusted to, um, bring over the carryover for that nice adoption that you all just approved for the math curriculum. At this time, we would appreciate, um, any, or at this time, I would ask for the Board's consideration for the adoption of the budget, which was appropriated by the Board of Supervisors last evening, and I would be happy to take any questions on it.
I, I just have one question. Um, we just did a, a property, uh, assessment. Does, does that affect our composite index, um, as far as our funding from the state?
It, the entire assessment will impact the local composite index from the state. However, it's on twenty-one numbers at this time, so for that assessment to catch up, we'll probably be about four more years out before we'll have that. However, I do believe there was an assessment twenty-one, twenty-two, so we may see an adjustment in the LCI this next, this next time.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I may, um, did I understand you to say that, um, non-SOQ employees will also see a three percent pay increase this?
Absolutely, across the board, we did a three percent pay increase for all employees inclusive of a step. So keep that in mind, it is inclusive of a step, so if you are at the top of the scale, you are only receiving the cool amount, um, and not the entire three percent.
Other board members have questions?
I have a couple. Um, so when is the new LCI coming out? Because the, but the, I know the governor's leaving in December, and like the last thing he does is releases his budget for the incoming new governor, whoever that person is, to take over. Is there an LCI composite index released before then?
No, it'll come out with the introduced, introduced budget.
Same time?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep, so the new year for the biennium is the twenty-seven, twenty-eight budget. So when they come out and introduce that twenty-seven budget, that, the LCI will be showed adjusted on there, and we will have it for those two years.
I, I mean, I'm going to obviously vote for the budget, but I think it's also in our best interest considering the seasoned staff members that we have, uh, a national teacher shortage, and our, we want to keep the teachers. I think that moving into next year's budget cycle, we should start to think about divisions, and several divisions who, they have their thirty-year steps, scale, and then there are special concessions for each year above that thirty years. So if you have, if you are at step, if you've been in a thirty-one years, they add a three percent for each year above or whatever it is. And I think, I know we don't have a lot of staff members that are like that, but I think moving forward, it's something we should consider.
Certainly, I can put in that, um, put that for an item for discussion. Our teacher scale does give up to thirty-three years of service, um, but yes, absolutely, from that thirty-fourth year and beyond.
Other board members? If not, we can entertain a, I'm sorry.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding, so, uh, folks who thirty-four and above were looking at potentially a three per, three percent, whatever percent additional for that.
He's talking for next year for us to consider it and looking at it like a longevity amount that we would provide.
And have we budgeted for that?
Well, I have a policy that says, you know, I like the thirty-year scale because after thirty years, you're eligible for VRS and everything else, but other divisions have it in print that after completion of your thirty years, there is a, like a, a certain percent that's assigned for each year. Like if, you know, you have your thirty-one years, you got a, whatever it is, plus a three percent or what?
I'm, I, I think it's, you know, great idea, I don't have a, any issue with that. I'm just concerned about, uh, have we budgeted for, for that?
Mr. Kelly, I believe you are making that as suggested as we go through the budget process for fiscal year twenty-seven? Correct, okay, for next budget cycle. It would be all part of the budget, budget cycle that we would go through for twenty-seven.
Okay. Other board members have questions? If not, we can entertain a motion to approve the budget as presented?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in proper second that we would approve the budget as presented. Ms. Stevens, would you call for the vote?
Dr. Rollins Fells?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
And the budget stands approved as presented. Thank you, Ms. Stevens. We don't have any new business, so that takes us to, uh, school board member comments. We'll start on this end this time, Dr. Hubbard.
Um, if we were to look at or ask, Lisa, how many folks are viewing this online? Do we, five? Currently, five, and if we look in the audience, we don't have a whole lot of folks in here tonight. And that's unfortunate because, uh, I think it's important that everyone in the county truly understands the Herculean efforts that, uh, our staff, uh, professionals, uh, engage in every, you know, every school term. We're at the end of a school term, uh, and I want to basically congratulate each of you for your hard, hard work. Uh, thank you for your dedication to, uh, the students of this county and to their families, uh, because it, it means a lot, it means for the health of the county, health of those, uh, individuals. So I commend you for your, your efforts and, and, uh, can only wish you continued success because your success also equates to our students' success as we go forward. So I thank you for your, your efforts and your continued efforts as you're going forward. So, uh, thank you for that, and thank you for putting up for this school, the school board member up here is always asking a thousand and one questions. So, uh, thanks a lot, enjoy the summer, uh, and let's, let's get your rest and get ready for, for the next term.
Thank you, Dr. Hubbard. Mr. Phil, or Mr. Fortune?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, before I start, uh, I just want to beg the indulgence of the chair and my colleagues on the dais because these comments will probably be the most extensive comments that I've made since, um, becoming a school board member, and quite honestly, may be the most extensive, um, during my tenure, so. Uh, but before I get, I start in earnest, I want to express my sincere condolences, uh, to my colleague on the Board of Supervisors, um, Mr. Jeff Seeley, and his entire family on the loss of his dad. um, Mr. Jeff Seeley and his entire family on the loss of his dad. Um, made a piece of, that surpasses all understanding. Rest upon you and your family during this most difficult time. Also, let me formally thank, uh, the Board of Supervisors, uh, for auth- authorizing, uh, the use of FY twenty-four version funds to allow us to purchase learn, learning colleges. Uh, this step provides an immediate and needed solution, uh, to address overcrowding at, uh, Bowling Green Elementary School. Uh, that said, uh, upon reviewing and reflecting upon our most recent joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors, I feel compelled to address a matter, uh, that very well may be top of mind of citizens who were in attendance or who later viewed the joint meeting online. And that is the constitutional and legislative foundations, uh, that mandate the school board's responsibility to supervise, uh, public education. Uh, the drafters of the Virginia Constitution recognize that the proper supervision of public education is foundational to the success of our Commonwealth. Article one, section fifteen of the Virginia Bill of Rights states, "Free government rests, as does all progress, upon the broadest possible diffusion of knowledge, and that the Commonwealth should avail itself of those talents which nature has sown liberally, liberally among its people by assuring the opportunity for their fullest development by an effective system of education throughout the Commonwealth." Furthermore, Article eight, section seven mandates that the supervision of schools in each division shall be vested in a school board. That responsibility is further detailed in section twenty-two point one dash seventy-nine of the Code of Virginia. On May twelfth, twenty-twenty-five, our school board held a joint meeting to address both overcrowding and anticipated growth. In accordance with our constitutional and statutory duties, this board unanimously decided to keep pre-k students in their home schools for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, implement a bridge plan using on-site learning cottages, and move forward with a long-term plan for a new elementary school. We communicated these decisions to the Board of Supervisors in a later, letter dated May fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five, and requested a joint meeting to secure funding for trailer installation by the start of the school year. To my surprise, the May twenty-seventh joint meeting did not center on our funding request. Instead, the supervisors presented a previously undeclared plan to address overcrowding, one that included relocating pre-k students despite our board's earlier vote and written notice on the issue. This action raised concern, not only because it disregarded our board's decision, but because it overlooked or misunderstood this board's constitutional role as the body tasked with the supervision of public education. The school board is a duly elected body, elected by the citizens of Caroline. Not a body appointed such as the planning commission, for example, which is charged with providing recommendations to the Board of Supervisors. I do appreciate and thank Supervisor Black for his candor in disclosing that he did not participate in drafting that plan. Let me be very clear. I recognize the importance of building and maintaining a collaborative relationship with the Board of Supervisors. School boards in Virginia cannot levy taxes and must rely on federal, state, and local funding. We value input from the Board of Supervisors. And our board, along with Superintendent Calverick, have taken deliberate steps to keep them informed and engaged in the process. In fact, prior action on this past Monday regarding the expansion of Bowling Green Elementary School, we must work collaboratively to draft a memorandum of understanding that clearly outlines and protects the rights and responsibilities of both the school board and the Board of Supervisors before any expansion plan can move forward. I agree with the tenor of Supervisor Black's comments during last night's meeting that more work needs to be done on the MOU. But I am confident that we can reach a place of consensus if both boards commit to work together. As one of three first-term members on this board, it seems past friction may still be impending, impeding our ability to work collectively and constructively. Uh, during the May twenty-seventh Board of Supervisors meeting, we were offered at all the branch. Um, I respectfully suggest we instead begin building a bridge, one that both boards can walk across together. I have been approached by constituents and CCPS staff on several occasions about the perceived adversarial relationship between both boards. To that end, Mr. Chair, I respectfully request that you and Board of Supervisors Chair Mrs. Long poll your respective members on the possibility of a joint retreat in the very near future. Such a retreat would allow us to get to know one another better, particularly with, uh, new members on this board, and to openly discuss any lingering concerns or philosophical differences about the roles of our respective boards in public education. In closing, I want to reiterate my respect for the critical work of the Board of Supervisors. But I also hope they recognize that our board is deeply committed to making decisions in accordance with our constitutional mandate, always asking what will best serve our students, staff, and community. Only through mutual respect, transparency, and good faith collaboration can we deliver the high-quality public education that our students, our families, our staff, and the entire community deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fortune. Uh, Dr., I can't even remember your name, child. Dr. Juwanda Rollins Fells.
Very good. Um, I'm going to cut my comments, um, short this evening and just say that I am in full support of, uh, what Mr. Fortune has shared. Without even knowing what he was going to say, our theme is similar. Um, at the top of our board meetings, we start with a phrase that, um, I used to quote all the time. And so, I just wanted to put it back in front of all of us as it also ties in with the citizens', uh, comment that was made tonight. And that is that coming together is a beginning. Keeping together is progress and work, working together, excuse me, is progress. And I've, like you, have had an opportunity to reflect, um, to be pulled to the side from community members. Um, I did see the newspaper article and, um, did attend both of those meetings as well. And, um, there is a public declaration that I want to make tonight that coming together is indeed the beginning. And that is why our joint meetings are important. And we are in a season where what is required of us right now is also going to require more joint board meetings. And so, I would advocate, um, from my one vote in my chair, that we continue to explore that option. Um, coming together as a beginning also meant that, um, over the past nine years that I've been on this board, that we've been documenting things that were practiced, things that were understanding to make sure that there is clarity and that both boards agree. And that was a healing moment for us as a board, and I think that's something that we need to continue to do. In terms of keeping together, I do agree that we have, uh, fifty percent new board members on this board, all of whom have had powerful, uh, perspective, powerful voice, powerful, uh, insight. And, um, and I understand the comment about what has happened in the past. I would only add that when we say the past, we are also talking about prior to my tenure and prior to Sean's tenure on this board. Um, and so, we have to move beyond those things. How do we move beyond them? We stay aligned with the facts and we separate our facts from our feelings, and we separate the facts and the feelings from our opinion. We make sure that we do not digress in professionalism, that we monitor throwaway statements that may be emotional for any elected official in a moment, but realize the impact are to the people who teach and to the students who are, who we serve. And I wrote a note from our citizens' comment, and I'll recognize that, um, she said, "Do our behaviors match our words?" And that is a reality check for everyone from this board stage to the county board stage to leadership in the building, to teachers who turn their doorknob. Our children are watching. Our children are listening. And while they may not be on this YouTube right now, when parents get on Facebook, that's the conversation in their home. And so, I hope that it reflects what we teach. I also want to say kudos to our staff. In my tenure on this board, we have been deliberate in our information sharing and our transparency in the information that we share, as reflected in our board norms to my left and my right, and when we engage with the Board of Supervisors. I don't know if it's public knowledge that in our board norm, if one of us asks a question, everybody gets the answer. If there is a joint meeting or a staff-level meeting, minutes are taken from that meeting, and those minutes are then shared with senior leadership on both sides, not just one person, but to all. That is how we stay together because a lot of our problems could be resolved if we look at communication. And then the last thing which takes us to current day and current topics and current news and the work that we have ahead of us is working together is progress. Working together is progress. Working together is progress. And we have to have a community mindset. In doing that, we have to know our roles and our responsibilities. We have to look at data-informed decisions. We have to look at subject matter experts coming in and providing that insight. And in looking at our strategic plan, I did pull that up. Um, one of the things that we encourage our students to do is engage in productive struggle. Engaging in productive struggle means looking at challenging tasks, and what it grows in an individual is grit, persistence, and perseverance. Why do we do that? Because we want to create respectful and supportive environments and create learners for the future. So, in this moment, we have some conversations that are going to come forward where we are going to have to engage in productive struggle. For me, I am not willing to compromise my personal integrity. Not going to happen. I will vote no. I am not willing to look beyond the needs of the students and the families that we serve because that is why I was elected. And the demonstration of this and the call to action for all of us is there are six board members. So, if I take six sheets of paper, it pretty much looks like this. They have six board members and the Board of Supervisors. We are responsible on the CCPS side for about seven hundred employees. Is that number correct? Eight hundred employees. That's about the size of a Rema paper, stack of paper. And we make decisions for over four thousand students who come from over thirty-two thousand people in this county. There are twelve people between both of these boards that impact over thirty thousand people. So, as we move forward with collaboration, I will commit to continue to be a champion for impact and a champion for public education. My vote is going to reflect what's right for children. It is going to reflect my integrity and is going to understand that we have to collaborate if we are going to say hashtag one Caroline. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Ms. Sears.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, I will agree with both of my coworkers, colleagues up here. I feel exactly the same way that they do, and my commitment is right in line with Dr. Rollins Fells. I am always student and staff-focused first and our families. They are the most important, and that's why I'm here, for my own kids and for all of our kids because they're all of our kids, and we want what's best for them. Um, moving away from that a little bit, I do want to congratulate the class of twenty-twenty-five, but also all of the staff who put on an amazing graduation ceremony. Um, it was lovely, a lovely event that everyone attended. Um, I also want to congratulate our softball team who played in such a tough game on Monday. Uh, it was great to see so many community members out supporting them, and it was a lot of fun, even during, um, a small, a small downpour, uh, where everyone was quite, uh, soaking wet. Um, I also want to thank, uh, the staff who is working the CTE summer camps. I have heard that it's been so much fun and very rewarding for all of our students who are involved. And I also want to thank, um, our staff who is working summer school. Um, thank you for putting in the extra time to make sure our students are getting what they need. And those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Sears.
Thank you.
And last, and at least.
It's always, I don't like going last because I hate following Juwanda. Now I got Liddell to worry about as well. Uh, thank you, guys, uh, for the, 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 the comments on everything. I don't know if there's a lot I can piggyback on top of that except to agree with what was said. Um, I, I honestly feel, trying to be optimistic, that I think that the county is, we're at that tipping point in regards to getting a new building and finances being limited. And we are, quite frankly, for the first time, being forced to sit down at a table and work together. And I think, we've talked about precedents, can I switch mics? Thank you. Uh, we talked about precedents about, um, and what's being established, and I hope that this forces us to get together because these are not easy conversations. Um, there's no one here that ever says, "I can't wait to go sit down with the Board of Supervisors and talk about how we're going to request money and it's not going to be given to us." And I know that they do not sit there and say like, "Oh, I hope they ask for hundreds of millions of dollars so we can turn them down." They are difficult conversations. And again, we all want to get to the same place. I think that's why we put up with the aggravation that we do when we get fifty thousand emails over stuff. But I am hopeful that this will lead to a more fruitful relationship with the Board of Supervisors because they are saying some things that they are very concerned about with us, and we are doing the same. And I think that we are taking the steps to get in the right position to make the decisions that is what is best for our students. Um, I'm hopeful that we can move forward with getting things taken care of at Bowling Green. I do believe in my heart that us, we're going to have to build a new school. I had a discussion with a constituent on Saturday about how adding rooms at Bowling Green impacts the crowding at Lewis and Clark. And the answer was, it does not. And they knew that. And then why do we do it with Madison? And I'm like, that's not even been discussed. But that being said, it is what it is. We are what we are. We are celebrating a great year. I think graduation was absolutely fantastic. Um, I was glad to see so many people on, on Monday night. I think it speaks volumes about this board when we put the kids first and said, "Let's not have a meeting tonight. Let's go out and watch some softball." I think that was great. Two really quick things for our staff out there. The, the superintendent gave us a book and we have summer reading. I got to tell you, as a history nerd, I was looking, I got my eyes set on history books that I was going to start reading this summer. But no, Dr. Calverick told me that I have to read this book on improving school board effectiveness. I was lucky. She did send a, a little QR code because we use some AI that's going to have some, uh, yeah, an AI on the first, um, what did you say? What is it?
A podcast.
A podcast on the first chapter that's AI-generated. Um, so, I'm, yeah, I'm looking forward to that. I could almost say it with a straight face, but I will read it. Um, one thing I want to say before I, I, I've talked to, because we do all these VSBA meetings and we talk to a lot of people. And I want to place this right now, I want to plant this seed because we're done with the budget cycle, and I want to do it now before we start the next budget cycle so we can start thinking about two to three years from now for this board, something that I think that we should look at because other boards have done this, um, is potentially making school board members, having them, giving school board members the opportunity to be considered as full-time employees so they can purchase benefits, and also potentially get VRS, um, option as well for them down the road. And you have to spend so many years in the program, and I know that that's a budget, and I see, but other school boards do it. In lieu of receiving a pay raise or whatever type of additional benefits, they have the option to purchase insurance and be members of the VRS and pay into that as well. I think it's something that, it's a very cost-effective way that provides a good benefit for us, because I think that long after I am not sitting in this chair anymore, that I am hopeful that we can attract and retain high-qualified, qualified board members. Liddell, you found your voice, man. I'm really proud of you. That's great. That was great. That concludes my comments.
Thank you very much. Um, again, uh, as I always start my comments by saying thank you to the staff, uh, for the great job that you do. And I say that every, every month, and we all say it. And we're not just saying it, we really believe it, and it shows in the success of our students and the success of our school system. I also wanted to thank my fellow board members up here. Uh, we have a tough job, but we work hard to do the best that we can. But one of the things that makes the job easier is we have sincere board members who care about children and who care about Caroline County. And we don't often always go in the same, well, we always go in the same direction, but sometimes we differ a little bit about how we get there. But if you're going to Washington, it doesn't matter whether you go on Route One or Ninety-five or Three O One, you're gonna eventually get to Washington. We're going to eventually get to where we need to be to educate our students. I think about our job here and our duties. I think about, uh, the Board of Supervisors and the tough job that they have. And I know about that because I served on that board for twenty years. It's, it's tough. I think we have to learn, both boards. We have to learn what our jobs are. We have to learn what our lanes are. And we have to learn to trust each other, that we are going to stay in our lane and the decisions that we make are going to be best for children. The right thing isn't always popular, but that doesn't mean you don't do it. That means you do what you have to do, because when I go down the streets in Bowling Green or Fredericksburg or Richmond or wherever, and I see young people who have gone to Caroline and who have finished and are out working, and some have children here, when they come and say, "You really did a good job for me," that, that, that's money in my pocket. Uh, when kids or parents come up to me and say, and, and I'm sure we all have that, uh, experience, they say, "Thank you." They say, "Thank you because you stayed on me." They say, "Thank you because you made me do what I needed to do, and that's why I'm successful today." And we have far more that are successful than are not, which means we're doing something right. We, as a board, have some tough decisions to make and some tough decisions ahead, and the Board of Supervisors as well. But we're going to have to come to the table and be honest with each other and put our personal feelings aside. There is no place in either of these elected positions for people who have access to grind. We can't do that. We can't let that happen. Uh, we have to remember that, I think has been stated, the decisions that are made impact over four thousand students. That's a lot of people. And we have to be able to look at ourselves in the mirror at the end of the day and say, "I did what was best for kids. I made the decision that I believe is going to be necessary for our children to be successful." That's what we do. That's what we've always done, and that's what we're going to continue to do. So in closing, I will again say, "Thank you. We're gonna continue to work hard. We're gonna continue to do what's necessary, and Caroline County will always be hashtag number one." Thank you. Superintendent, Dr. Calverick.
Thank you, Chair Taylor. Sometimes throughout the summer months, as we move throughout the community, we receive an inquiry, and the inquiry is, "What goes on in a school division over the summer months when students are at their homes?" Well, let me tell you some of the highlights of the things that are occurring in the months of June and July. Softball regionals and states, CTE camp, CMS and CHS Future Farmers of America at the Virginia Convention, Mystery Locker Monday after those lockers were removed from the middle school and the high school, summer school, Benchmark Advanced Training, the Scholastic Bowl team traveling to Georgia for the national championship. Items to come, Caroline's Promise Supply Drive. Very popular day on July twenty-sixth from ten to twelve at the high school. Mark your calendar. Summer reading and STEM pop-ups. More information coming, but mark your calendar. We will be out and about from July eighth to July tenth. We also have our Dahlgren Family STEM Day on July sixteenth. All of this information will be forthcoming. We also have a leadership retreat next week for two days. We had our office support retreat yesterday. We have a school board retreat and master board training coming up in July. Needless to say, it is like a grand opening of a Walmart on an annual basis with the amount of planning and logistics that occurs. And we could not do that without a supportive board and with a team that lifts the work each and every day. So shout out to all of our leaders in CCPS and all of our educators who help, uh, with the grind over the summer. I do want to say, um, personally, I will be traveling for the July board meeting. I am presenting at the National Superintendent Forum. And so Mrs. Marcia Stevens will serve as a superintendent's designee for the July school board meeting. And with that, I will yield the floor.
Dr. Calverick and board members, and I meant to say in my comments, and I, I forgot, I wanted to, again, it's been said, but I wanted to express my condolences to, um, uh, Mr. Um, Seeley in the passing of his father. That's, that's a tough thing, something you're never ready for. So, uh, he has certainly my prayers, and I'm sure the prayers of this board. And we send off our condolences to him. Having said that, if there are no other business, we can entertain a move for adjournment?
Move for adjournment?
I rise up for the winner. We need to approve the, um, superintendent's personnel agenda.
See, I gotta be home.
And I'll make that motion.
Okay, make that motion. Uh, the motion to approve the personnel agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded. We approve the superintendent's personnel agenda as presented in our executive session. All in favor, let it be known. Oh. Ms. Stevens, call for the vote.
Oh, gosh. Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins-Fells?
Aye.
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye. And this personnel agenda has been approved.
Mr. Chairman, I move for adjournment.
Aye, is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and properly seconded. We adjourned. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye.